I'm making my enthusiasm, I'm gonna wait for me, so I'm gonna fly through it a little bit, but feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Math interventionists. So really, the question was for the math interventionist, and I had a couple of questions. The field was, what have we done in the past? We did have math interventionists this past year, and what would we like to do in the future?
May I just give the chat?
Alright.
We know it's... This way he has a question. I'm gonna go there.
So I don't follow up yet. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
That's alright. So we did have a couple of questions, and it was really, what did we do this year? What would we like to do in the future? Where's some data, some information, and so I put the PowerPoint together. And like I said, I'm gonna fly through it a little bit, but please stop me if you have any questions. First, this past year, we created math, we had math interventionists who ran early intervening services. And the EIS is for, the purpose of creating systems and structures to help struggling students. But it is not for students who have a disability or special ed student. It actually is prior to any type of special ed that we would intervene first. So having a disability excludes someone from early interviewing services. So this past year, Hollowell School and NSCS both had half-time or part-time math interventionists, and it was paid for by an EIS grant. The grant was one year, that we don't have it for next year, it just, it doesn't exist. We serviced about 70 children in this, in a flexible lot.
Was this the first year that you had math interventionists?
Second year.
Second year.
Second year.
In both the same schools?
Yes. And I can give you more information about that grant if you want it, about how we ran it.
Do you have information about performance results?
We do, yep. It is a wicked long PowerPoint, so let me tell you. I have information, but I promise it won't take too much.
Two part-times mean what? What was the part-time?
So it was two part-time, that we didn't hire, just on the X, Y, wait. So we ran a flexible program that served about 75 students. I have 70 on this slide, but about 75 students. And we hired them, if you remember, it was, they were appointed at the end of November, and they started in December. And so one teacher was .5 at Hollowell, and one teacher was .9 at NSCS. The reason that we had .9, we had a set number we couldn't go over, it was $60,000 that we couldn't go over, but because the NSCS teacher was a first-year teacher with no experience, and she wasn't starting until December, the money allowed us to have her .9. Does that make sense? Because she was such a low-staffed student, she needed hospital. So that's how we ran it this year, with EIS funds that we don't have available to us for this coming year. So we served about 70 students in this flexible program, and after the teachers were appointed, the first thing we did was, they met with me for four full days, and we designed the program together, we studied the standards, we analyzed data, we had a lot of conversations about the techniques and teaching strategies. So it was, it was pretty intense four days to really plan the program. And I was basing it on what we had done the year before with the similar grant, and just fine-tuned it. And so that's how we pretty much started. And we began looking at our K-12 assessment system. Now, this is what we have for all students. So in every single grade level, K-12 or II, we have a set of standards, Common Core standards. Those standards are broken up into units of study. We teach a unit of study, and then we assess the unit of study. And that's considered our curriculum-based assessment. So it's all embedded within our curriculum, and everyone takes that assessment. The teachers score the assessment by standard, so we know how kids are doing each standard, or each major content standard, which is the important ones that power it. Using that data, once the teachers were appointed and meeting with me for four days, we use the data to decide which students at first blush looked like they needed help or struggling. And those are the kids that we would consider in the response to intervention, or the edu language, would be our Tier 2 in 3 kids. So a Tier 2 student would be, they're really struggling on certain standards, and they need extra help and support in that moment, and we give it to them. A Tier 3 student would be someone who needs a lot more regular support. So it's really Tier 2 in 3 students that we service. The data that we use for our entrance criteria came from our curriculum embedded assessments. And this is actually a screenshot, a live screenshot of student results on a random grade level. And so basically, for every grade level, we assess students, or every unit of study, and we report out on how they do on the major content standards. We color-coded it just for ourselves, because we make decisions about our data and how the kids are doing. So when we sat down together to define our program or create our program, this is the first thing we looked at, and we said, who are the kids in red that are jumping out at us? So once we had that, we then excluded the kids who already had an IEP. The reason is, they already have service. Even if they don't have service in math, but they have a learning disability in reading, if a parent or a teacher or administrator has a concern about that child, they bring it to, they can convene an IEP team to have some conversation. So the EIS funds, especially tied to this grant, we weren't allowed to service students who already had an IEP or an Individualized Education. Once we developed a list of students that we felt like would need intervention, we worked with our teachers. And so we had teacher recommendations, we used our observations and our data to make a final list of which students we want to serve. And then, I'm probably going off track, because I can't get it to say it, I should know my glasses on. So, and then, so then we pretty much remade our schedule. The one important thing about scheduling was it was supplement, not supplant. And that's really what we ran, but it's really any intervention program. If there's a student who's struggling in math, what we don't want to do ever is take them out of math class and work on the Nines Table. Because what happens is, we work on the Nines Table, they're not getting the awesome rigorous instruction of the classroom teacher, and they actually end up more in class. So the supplement, not supplant, program was really, is a really important piece of any type of intervention. We want to give the kids more math, not less math in the end.
Can you tell me, so then when were they getting the intervention?
So they get, I might have a slide on that, I think I do have. Oh, is this the slide? I think it might have come out. But anyway, I'll answer it. So the intervention was during the school day, and the students were taken out of class, and it usually typically was, oh, it is, during the station rotation ELA block. So especially in elementary, when students have a large ELA block, there's usually independent time to work, and that's usually when we try to pull students. So it's not always that way, but that's definitely what we tried to target, some of that independence work time. Teachers absolutely have to work, like the interventionists had to work, with teachers and with the principal, because it's never, there's never a perfect time, there's never a great time to misinstruction. We do feel that math is worthy of it, especially a targeted intensive math program or intervention program. So, go ahead.
I'm not a follow-up fan, but so, and my question is, when I look at this, okay, what happens if you have a child that's in need of math remediation, and also needs the literacy, you're pulling him from the literacy?
So honestly, it happens all the time. We have kids that have physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, you know, other services. We honestly do the best we can. So I think it depends on the child. If they have a lot of literacy service, well, maybe we want to take that into account, and talk to the teacher, but if it's during, especially if it's more during and independent work, usually the teacher then works with the child to make sure they have what's needed to be done, but they're not missing direct instruction. But the teachers are really good about the scheduling. And they want their kids to get that extra help they need, especially when they know it's targeted and specific instruction. That's the key to it. No work is not work.
I'm sorry, so maybe it was on the other slide, but how many times a week was each thing told for?
So that depends, and that's the, one of the slides, it was flexible grouping, that was a big piece of this, because if there's a student who we want to work on a particular standard with, and they have it, we send them back to class, you don't need to stay in, you know, extra instruction, if you have mastered this standard. So there were some kids that only needed a couple times a week, or only needed it for a few weeks, got them up to snout, and they were fine. There were other kids that needed it regularly, and so it was four to five times a week. So basically, our groupings are there, our groupings are flexible. And students were added and exited based on need. Students who closed identified gaps showed significant growth. According to the unit assessments, they were pretty much exited, and our intervention teachers also had a lot of communication with the classroom teacher, exactly what they were working on. Because if they weren't working on the same skill, so the idea was pre-teaching and re-teaching, if there was a major content standard, and those are the standards, there's like 24 standards in 4th grade, there's 14 major content standards. If the student doesn't have a clear understanding and concept of major content standards, they will not be successful in the next year of math instruction. So those are the ones we focus on in our targeted intervention. So the teacher, the interventionist, will pre-teach the major content standard. Then the child goes into math class, and they've already had a preview of the standard, the teacher introduces it to the whole class, and then the interventionist re-teaches the major content standard. And so that's pretty much how we target our instruction. We had, we based it on data, and we served six first graders, 18 second graders, 22 third graders, 14 4th graders, and 15 5th graders. But mind you, it wasn't always at once. So that's 75 kids, but maybe somebody on, one of the teachers on their roster only had 20 kids that week, but she had, someone exited and didn't need intervention anymore, and she was able to pick up someone else. Does that make sense? So with the grant, we had to do pre and post-assessment. So we have assessments on all kids on all standards. The pre, and this data, I wanted to show you just kind of what it looks like, but it's a really long spreadsheet, so there are actually even more standards that were assessed, and what our results were. And this is just one group of kids. And so this was the results. So it looks fantastic, right? You have a magic wand, you fix everyone in math, and boom, yay! But that's not always the case, because I'm not the biggest fan of putting a lot of stock in pre and post-assessment, because the pre-assessment is before we talk the skills. So if you don't know how to multiply fractions, you're in intervention because you're not great at math. So of course you don't do well on a pre-assessment, and then we give a post-assessment, and we look like miracle workers. So this is something we had to keep, but I don't think it's, you know, 100% accurate, so I figured I'd just share that. And so what I look at, to tell a program is, I'm losing people left and right! So, I'll just leave it, but anyway. So what I look at, to see if a program's successful, is I look at our unit assessment data. And it looks more like this. And the reason is, if you look, and this is just, obviously, the kids' names on there, and I was trying to be really careful to make sure there was nothing that was identifiable, of course. But if you look at the top-left one, you can see, that was like Unit 1, before our kids, that group of kids, had any type of intervention. And so you see all the red, and that's why they were flagged, or red, and or yellow, but that's why they were flagged. They needed some intervention, we gave them intervention. And then they took their next unit assessment data as they've had intervention, but they took it in their regular math class. And you can see that the kids, it wasn't, you know, all sunshine, roses, but we made significant improvement. So there are kids that on their own, without intervention, really struggled in Unit 1. With intervention, Unit 2, they're making some significant improvements. You'll see, like, one student, you know, the first unit, you can see, he only had, she had 28%, and the next unit, he was up to, you know, 48%. So it doesn't seem like that much, he's still in the red, we're still really concerned about that student, but that's still a big gain for the student. So we definitely saw some significant improvement from unit to unit, with intervention and without intervention. But again, and I forgot to say this, there are different standards, so that, you have to keep that in mind when you're looking at the data. This is Unit 2, totally different set of standards. So how did they do with new set of standards? They didn't go walking in the door with some support. If there are kids that we've given support all year long, and they haven't made any gains, well, that's a huge red flag to us, it may not be a math problem. That may be, go to our special ed team, or evaluation team, we want to dig into this. Maybe it's a auditory processing problem, it has nothing to do with math, it's, you know, something bigger or something different. So even the kids that don't make progress, it's still really good information, because we may want to make some decisions about that, like bringing them to a different team to have some conversations.
When a child makes an improvement like that, do they remain in the program?
They don't, flexible program. So as soon as we feel a student has made some good improvement and can go it on their own, they're just back in their regular class, they don't go back.
So you must see, if a child entered in 1st grade, the numbers must diminish as they stay in the program? And the increase comes from new students in, you know, starting the year?
So we hopefully run the program for two years, and both years, it wasn't even both years, and both years there were part-time people, so I can't say, you know, we ran the program last year, so we didn't have any 3rd graders that needed it, or we didn't have any 3rd graders that needed it, that they also needed it in 2nd grade. There may be some kids that just need extra support, but once they get the extra support, they can meet the standard. So...
But do they continue to need the extra support?
Some kids do, and some kids don't. Some kids just get extra support, they understand the standards, they got the boost they need, and they're smooth sailing. But other kids consistently need some extra support. Thank you. So how would this translate to PARC? And when you look at this, we wouldn't say, so if you look at PARC, PARC reports out on a 5, you know, there's five levels. Level 5 is exceeding the standard, Level 1 is not meeting at all. When we look at our PARC scores, we're not looking for this intervention program for our 4s to, our 5s to increase from 4s. Our kids that scored 4 last year, are they going to be 5s because of this? No, because our kids who scored 4s don't need intervention. So this initiative won't be targeting those kids. This initiative doesn't even really target our Level 1 kids. Most of our kids that score Level 1 probably have an IEP. We don't have a lot of kids that don't, that, most, most of the kids that are Level 1 have some type of disability. So it's really, we're targeting our Level 2 kids, we want to bring them to Level 3. So Level 2 is partially meeting the standards, and Level 3 is approaching the standard. And then, we want to bring our Level 3 kids approaching the standard to Level 4 meeting the standard. So we're looking for our Level 2s and 3s to become 3s and 4s. And over time, I really think we can do that. So the benefits of intervention, just in general, is just, it's providing instructional support to the kids who need it. It requires teachers to rely on assessment data to support instructional decisions. We do a really nice job of that in North Smithfield, but it's one more tool to say, data is important, you just don't arbitrarily make decisions about kids. We have evidence in front of us. And the next one, and I put it in bold, because I firmly believe it, is that it reduces inappropriate special education referrals and placements. And it's not just it may, if we have a system and structure, it will reduce. And the reason is, when we get our kids from 3s to 4s, they would not, even if they were brought to a team meeting, they wouldn't qualify. If you're meeting the standards in your class, you won't qualify for special education. Like, it's no, it just is what it is, you're meeting the standards, you're accessing the curriculum. So just by moving our kids up a level, we will reduce the number of kids that would be referred to special ed, or that would be identified as having a learning disability. It provides flexible levels of intervention, the way we ran it, so some kids, you know, we don't need it every day, we're not going to give it to you every day, and as soon as you get it, we're going to release you as soon as you're, you know, have some strong skills. And it also, of course, would improve our state assessment and PARC results. So what would the next steps be? The next steps would be, well, what would I recommend, I guess I was putting myself in this, but I would recommend the grade levels that are most in need of intervention. Unfortunately, we do have PARC data in district, but I can't share it, because it's embargoed. So what, PARC began releasing it to the district in June, and they update it every Friday. And so we get more data, more specific data, every single Friday, and I can log in and see it all, and so that's what I do all weekend, so it's wicked fun. But, the, but I can't report out. But knowing what I know, I would recommend that we would focus and target our efforts on grades 4 through 8. So I guess that's as much as I can say of the recommended levels that if we had intervention. We want to review the job description, we have to obviously pose a position or two. The principals would of course follow the internal protocols, school committee would appoint a person. And then, I would like to follow the exact same system instruction that I did last year, the intensive PD with me. And it's really, because I'm so picky about certain things, I'm likely bad about a lot, but I'm picky about this, and I think it's really important that if we do this, we pull a child out of the class, we need to knock it out of the PARC, because they're missing class time. And I don't take that lightly, and that it's targeted, it's targeted, it's intensive, and it's engaging, so the child's not miserable being there. And so that's, and it's based on these major content standards, so that's going to ensure the child will be successful the next year. So for me, that's one of the most important things that I do with the teacher or teachers, that I work. We, you know, set our criteria for eligibility, it will be similar to last year, we use unit assessment data, PARC data, teacher recommendations, we again send parent invitation, parent permission out, and we develop the schedule within the supplement, not supplant, around us. And so that's all I did, build the schedules with the teachers, the teachers built them with their building administrator and the classroom teachers. It's not easy, there's no good time to ever really pull a child out of class, but we do the absolute best we can. So my rule is, you can't pull them out of math. Other than that, let's just be flexible and make it work. So that's kind of where I stand on that. The length of intervention, I'm going to say around 40 to 50 minutes. The students, anywhere between 3 and 8. I know 8 sounds like a lot for a small group, but you have to remember, these kids do not have a learning disability. These kids are just, need some help in math, they're just struggling in some of the content that they're learning, and with some extra support, even if there's other, seven other kids in there, they could, that's all they need. And it's that re-teach, pre-teach, that you know about. Again, flexible groups, some students may need it for a short time, other students would need it throughout a year. We develop our communication tools to share with parents and teachers, use, of course, formative and supportive assessment data collected and analyzed. And I would then give progress and results shared with the school committee throughout the year. And I think that every year, I always want to do a better job and do a more thorough job, and I really think that in retrospect, I wish I kept you a little bit more up to date on last year's intervention. And so I will, you know, certainly want to get better about that this year. Although it's going long, so maybe we won't have it. So the critical detail for me is, that instruction during intervention is explicit, systematic, with a strong emphasis on the major content standards. This includes providing models of proficient problem-solving, verbalization of thought process, guided practice, corrected feedback, frequent review, that it is supplement, not supplant, that it's database decisions, and finally, that we get to bask in the glow of our awesome achievement. Because I really think we'll do great things if we have intervention system and structure set up on that. Yay! Come on!
Well, what's the plan to service the kids in grades 6 through 8? They all have full schedules, so what are you going to pull on?
So it's going to be, so it's the same, it's really the same conversation, the, so what, currently, Mr. LaCarre, he schedules, he does all the scheduling for the whole building. When a student has special needs, he does the individual special needs schedules. And you really try to do the least amount of damage to students, it could be, I hate to even name a subject, because I feel like people would be up in arms, like, can't take model that, it really, it's hard to take them out of anything. So it's a conversation with the teacher, it's even with the parents, you know, maybe there's, they're in an elective that they're not fond of, and they'd rather have it during elective time, or maybe it's during advisory time, or maybe it's during some of their extra PTP time. That's what we do.
Four times a week?
So it depends on the student. So for some students, it could be five times a week, and for some students, it could only be for a couple of standards. And that's the beauty of intervention, when it's locally funded, there's not a ton of strings attached. With, so IEPs or special education, what if a student has an IEP? It's like legal document, you follow it to a T, and you don't, you lose a lot of flexibility. Whereas we could say, here's a student, we're not going to wait until he crashes and burns, we realize he's really struggling on these standards, and all that we do is get some parents' permission, do you mind if we're, you know, grabbing him out of certain class? Nope, go ahead, do it, serve him for two weeks with a small group. So maybe a group, you know, I'm going to say, Period 1's group has typically five kids in it, sometimes it's seven, sometimes it's three, so it would be flexible, ideal, if I have to.
Is there anything in place that the parent uses another book though?
So we can't do anything about that, honestly. We don't have anything after school, I think that, I shouldn't say that, our teachers stay after school. If a child needs help, and they ask their teacher to stay after school, they would stay after school. So I shouldn't say that. But as far as a true intervention program, it has to be during the school day. There's so many kids that we can't, we can't get to because they can't stay after school, we don't always get the teachers that we want to teach the program after school, it just, honestly, we just don't get it very easily. I wish it worked, because that would be easier. But to see, what I would like to see in North Smithfield, like a system, a consistent system and structure. Because I believe, and I know Mr. LaCarre asks all the time, what do we need to be, number one? And I believe we can get there, we just need some supports in place, and we will get there.
Well, I just, we have another item on the agenda that I'd like to try to move up or tie into this, and I know they don't have everybody here, and I know Mr. LaCarre has recommended that we wait until later, but I think, if, I don't want answers, but I do want to just kind of put some things on the table, just to do that. Just item number 10, the low count, test scores at the high schools, just to talk, not to make any decisions. Am I able to move that up?
Yes, sir.
Ask permission.
Take down.
Can I make a motion for item 10, I'm hoping that is just for a discussion, no vote?
I'll do two more. May the session, well, in favor of the panel, opposed?
And I'm only asking, this is either the third or the fourth month that this has been on the agenda, and we haven't been able to get to it. It's not to put anybody on the spot, but I'm just concerned when I look at our scores in math, and I'm all for intervention, I'm all for RTI, however, I think this is more deep-rooted than just that, when we have 32% of the people, and this was in our packets for the past two months, it was not in the packet this week, so that's where I'm going to be reaching from. We have 32% of the kids are failing intermediate algebra, 22% CP Algebra II, 26% geometry, 45% CP Algebra I, 20% Algebra readiness. Those are huge numbers, and again, it's not directly equated. This is just, I'm concerned about that, and I don't think just a math interventionist is going to solve this problem. And I'd like to dig into this somehow with the high school, with superintendent, with the math department chair, with Claire. with the math department chair, with Claire, like with everybody. I'd really like to try to dig at this and figure out where is this coming from? What's causing this and what can we do to fix this from the ground up? Not just looking at this.
Now, Chair, I think the last few sentences that Mrs. Gillette stated is really the key. You're not going to solve anything tonight. It has been on the agenda probably three months. Mr. Yar sat for two and a half to three hours at one meeting. If you don't know, Mr. Yar is the high school math department chair who was specifically here that evening for that agenda item along with other people. My suggestion would be to schedule something late August, early September. Hate to say it, open an item meeting, bring your players together, have that fruitful discussion. You're going to hear a lot more than reading statistics off a sheet. A lot more. Because those numbers don't tell you. They cost questions, legitimate questions, but you don't, you don't, you're not aware of how we got there, what's been done so far. And the fact that you don't fix it there, you fix it in the lower levels. And you work your way up. So I would encourage you, because I said to Claire respectfully, don't get involved in this tonight, it's not appropriate. Tim is in here, Mr. Yar is in here. You need your other players here. And it's a worthy meeting and it would be worthy of that discussion because you'll hear a lot more than just reading the numbers off a sheet.
I suggest we, we have a special meeting because I agree with Steve, but it will take more time than just sitting here.
Oh, and I totally agree. And I know it's just, every time, we get to 10 o'clock and it doesn't come. I mean, it's 10, so I wanted to just put it up.
But that's not the fault.
What?
That's not the fault.
No, I didn't, that's exactly what I said. It's nobody's fault.
That's why it should be a one agenda item.
But that's exactly what I was saying is that I just wanted to get it out there now so that we can do something about it because I can't talk to my committee members to ask for it because then I find it. So I just wanted it out there. Yeah, we can try to do something.
You want a special meeting? Can we make a special meeting? And I'll make it.
Well, the chair won't call it.
I mean, I just think it warrants a deep discussion and we can't get it done in our meetings.
So I think our hearing is you're all there. And so I would suggest late August, early September. Mr. McGee can make sure he communicates with the math department and Claire. I think you'll, I think it'll be really informative and it's a really worthwhile meeting. You should have, absolutely.
The only thing I was going to suggest, Chairman, if you're interested, those with a kid in the high school, no, you know, very rich in the high school in particular, we can have almost like, I'd say subcommittee, but you know, we could be almost ahead of time with that, you know, with the math department. Kind of as a precursor to the meeting, you know? And then we could, the reason I say that is this, it might be easier for a small group of us to meet with all the high school math staff before the start of the school year. What do you think?
Anything. I just think we need that discussion started.
You still have a meeting, I'm saying. You still have a meeting, but you're not going to get all, maybe hiring all the teachers and all the students in those double meetings. But we can get us all in a meeting with Mr. Yar. Mr. Yar, you know, but me and I'm just, whoever is going to meet with them. Is that what you, you question?
You know, I love the idea. The only thing that I think could be intimidating as a math teacher to be in a meeting with the school committee, I think that the department head, Mr. Pepperin, Mr. McGee, myself, we could give you as much background as you need, have conversations. And if we wanted to then invite our math teachers to join, I think that might be jumping around a little bit. Like having, like, our community, the old math teachers, I think.
I would say just cool if you have to go down. And it's not, you know, something you can navigate.
I think, honestly, I think that we really could fill, just fill you in, just on the history, where we, where we were, where we are. We'll have more PARC data out, you'll be able to like digest some of that information before you meet that next cohort. But I'm willing to do it.
Do a workshop.
We have five, we don't have four. So do you think a workshop type of thing would be better for a small number and with the administrators as opposed to the teachers?
Right, I think that a high school department, a math department chair and Mr. McGee, Mr. Pepperin, myself, I think that would be the better first meeting. We could make a plan from there if we wanted more. I think for the first meeting, that would be a better idea.
So can I make a motion that a couple of us, anybody that's interested, meet with people that Claire just stated, beginning, maybe September? Maybe second week of September, let everybody get started and get everything done and then...
Strong. You want her? Before the school?
Why would you just have a couple?
Why would it be a couple? Why would the people, why would they report back to us?
Because I thought we were just going to report back. We have a small group, so let's not...
I'd love to have everyone, but I'm kind of...
I mean, anybody can go. I'm not saying, just as long as a couple people are really there. I think that would be great.
So what was the motion?
I don't know, we're just going to go.
You want a special meeting? Okay, special meeting, whoever can attend, okay.
To discuss math with the math chair, PARC, McGee, Claire, classes, which is...
And maybe it should be before, what time, in August?
I would suggest late August or September, really, because people are moved back in the groove. And you will hear, Claire hit the nail on the head. It's going to be wonderful for you because you're going to hear what action plans have been in place, what they've tried to improve instruction, curriculum, what's worked, what hasn't. So this isn't new to this department. And so, and then I think your questions and your perspective are extremely helpful. And so it should be all of you, though. It should be a select few. And so I would say late August, early September. Reach out to Mr. McGee, let him contact Mr. Yar and see what they come up with the dates and we come up with the dates. But just agree with tonight and then Sherry can facilitate it.
What's your motion?
It's not complicated.
Did you get that, Sharon?
Second.
If there, John second did it.
Sherry, you'll coordinate.
Motion is to do that.
Exactly.
That's what I wrote, to do that.
Any other discussion?
Let's do that.
All in favor of that?
Madam Chair, thank you for that. I just want to acknowledge Claire, just about everything she does is data-driven. And hopefully you were impressed with the fact that our approach has not been really, really... We call it double dose prescriptive. It's very much targeted to the assessment data. Kids get in and out, but as all of you know, with your math backgrounds, standards change. I could need help in third grade on a particular standard and I might be fine until I hit fifth grade and I hit a standard I'm totally discombobulated with. So, and I would appreciate you considering targeting that because I do think you're going to have a payoff over, over one to three years. You will see a payoff, absolutely. There you go.
Thank you.
I don't know if you're going to help me answer to this. And it's kind of, I'm trying to visualize how many kinds of kid could potentially be pulled from subjects to get different types of services, whether it be speech and language or the math or resource or... And I don't thi, do all the kids, I see two middle school teachers there, so I'm curious. I hope you want to give us the answer. Do all the kids have full schedules and how do they get, like, for example, resource, right? Special education resource? Is it pulled or is it scheduled in as a class? Is it? How is it pulled?
Based on the needs of the kid.
No, I mean, give me an example. Is it, is it scheduled for a resource class with a special ed teacher three times a week? Or is... Okay, what, please? So we, if I, if we printed up the schedules from the kids at the high school, would there be any kids who already had it locked in, in their schedule, that they were going to have resource three times a week? No?
I'm not aware of those special education programs.
Okay.
Perhaps some of these questions can be answered by a special meeting?
I guess so.
Did you have something you wanted to change in?
Madam Chair, I just want to, I just want to understand or have an understanding. So last year, there was 1.4 math interventionists, am I correct?
Yeah.
And that, those have been eliminated because of the federal law. So just to bring us back to where we are, I'm going to say, I'm going to say that we need 1.5. I'm going to just round them up, okay? I just want you to confirm this. If we, just say we don't do this. In the future, can you state that special ed course will go up?
So there'll be, I do think that there are kids who don't get intervention over the years and will eventually qualify for an individualized education program. Qualify for an IEP because the gap is so large and they can't access the curriculum. I honestly believe that they will go down if we do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have one point of clarification, I'm sorry. I know we're running out of time. So you had, in one of the early slides, I think you listed the current program as 1 through 5? Or grades 1 through 4?
Yes.
Is it 4 or 5?
Oh, 5.
Okay, so grades 1 through 5. Are you suggesting that we add 4 to 8 or are you suggesting that we move it to 4?
Move it up.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to make sure of.
We start with the most current data.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.